Bobby, roll call please.
Tim Fuller?
Here.
Tara Gisso?
Here.
Andy Mary?
Here.
Scott Jensenma?
Here.
Jeanne Long?
Here.
Patrick McKenna?
Present.
Jessica Mead?
Here.
Danielle Yushka? And Mike Boldy?
Yes. We'll then move on to item two, consent agenda, and we'd be looking for motion, please.
I move that the board approve the minutes of the May 24 and the May 31st special meetings as presented or amended the financial report from May 2016 and the payment of the bills and fund transfers through check 6092 to 6245 and 151601510 through 151601679 and a wire transfer of $34,037.310. Totally in $1,963,187.42.
Second.
Andy, was that you?
Yes.
We have motion from Ms. Mead and second from Mr. Mary. Any discussion? Very good. Bobby, roll call, please.
Tara Gisso?
No.
Yes. Andy Mary?
Yes.
Scott Jensenma?
Yes.
Jeanne Long?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Jessica Mead? Tim Fuller?
Yes.
Mike Boldy?
Yes.
Bobby, please let the record be quiet. Ms. Yuska arrived at 7:04.
Yes.
Next one, citizens' delegation. There is nobody in the motion. Okay. Yeah, why don't you do that and I'll do some of this. Before we get into new business, one little bit semi-old business or whatever, tonight is this gentleman's last official meeting with the Board of Education as the superintendent of the Unified School District of Antigo.
No cheering, please.
We've got a little something, so if you want to go over here and...
Pardon me, pardon me.
If you don't hurry up, I'm just going to take it home.
I gather here we have a lovely selection of...
Steak rub?
Everything in there that could be Antigo, I think, everything local, that could be local is local. And I didn't say local, not local. Down on behalf of the board and your devoted gentleman who were here, Mr. Bobby Brown, thank you for your years of service to the district. You've been with us a short time. I've learned a lot. You're a very well-read man, in my opinion. I've enjoyed your work and I believe that's the board, I can speak on their behalf and say the same thing. It's been an honor and a privilege to have you as part of our district and you've laid some pretty good groundwork for us to keep moving forward. And all I can say is I'm going to miss you, my friend.
Thank you.
Anything else from us here?
I just need a smile.
That worked.
Thank you.
You sent it over there.
Awesome.
Are you guys...
I will tell you that...
Thank you, Bobby.
I will tell you that you are a good board. You ain't perfect yet. But you're good. And I'm delighted to be leaving knowing that you are in very good hands.
I think we can say that our new man stepped up officially as of Friday, Brian?
Friday.
Friday?
Taking the first day off.
Did I approve that? Yes, I did, okay.
Well, first word of advice, make it a habit.
All right, very good. Now, let's get back to the business at hand. So, new business, first thing we'll head on is the committee reports and committee on instruction, please.
Okay, the structure committee was met on June 7th, 2016, at the high school. Board members present were Jeanne Long, Danielle Yuska, Tim Fuller, Scott Jensenma, other board members, like Mike Boldy. Administrator was Cindy Fisher, Brian Missfeld, Karen Baker, and Jeff Lukebough. Cindy did an excellent job explaining all the testing that we do with our students, the ACT, the forward exam, the ACT plus writing, and it was very informational. It'd be great if she could share that with the board, I really enjoyed that. The committee discussed the monitoring reports and we decided that we would have a present of monitoring reports in December, which will establish a baseline. It will be followed by a progress report in June, and this will be taken to the board meeting on June 28th. Other topics that we would like to discuss would be student programs like Battle of the Books, Destination Imagination, and Special Education Program. Cindy Fisher explained that some of the instructional policies need to be updated. It is the goal of the district for our policies to match our practices, and she'll come forward at the next meeting with the revision on the cell phone policy. The next meeting will be on August 2nd, 2016, at 7:00 PM at the Antigo High School IMC room, and the meeting was adjourned by 8:15.
Looks like we have some policies, June, that you brought up, so if you'd like to make a motion or if someone...
Okay, I'm looking for a second reading, the adoption of these policies as listed, 34564. That's the approved high school activity programs. The changes were the course options and the approval of virtual courses. Policy 347 were the student records. Looks like that fell as all new. Policy 346, student assessment. Policy 453, meds to students and medication treatment rules. So, we're looking for a motion, or we'd be secondary for the adoption of these policies listed.
Then we'd be looking for a motion. Anyone, please?
I move the board approve and adopt revised policies 345.164, the school program and activities, 346, student assessment, 347, pupil records, and 453.4, and rule administering medications to students.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have motion for Mr. Fuller, second from Ms. Gialzo, on the approval and adoption of revised policies. Any discussion? Very good. Bobby, roll call, please.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Scott Jensenma?
Yes.
Jeanne Long?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Danielle Yuska?
Yes.
Tim Fuller?
Yes.
Tara Gisso?
Yes.
And Mike Boldy?
Yes.
Very good. Is that it from the committee on instruction, Jeanne? Okay, then we will go out to operations. Eddie?
Okay, the operations committee was held on June 21st at the high school. The meeting was called toward 7:00 PM. Board members present were myself, Jessica Mead, Patrick, and Mike Boldy, Tara Gisso. Let's excuse you. Administrators, Tim, Brian, and Tim, sorry, Tim, Brian and Jake were there, and Tina. There was no public comment. Tim asked committee members how they would like to structure future meetings of the operations committee. Brian Missfeld said the agenda items would not need to be action items on the agenda because the committee does not need to take action at committee level. He said we will work with administrative assistants to ensure that items for action be brought to the regular board meeting. Patrick shared that he had concerns regarding the role of the operations committee and the facilities, the ad hoc committee, and discussion followed. Tim explained that board members will have a chance to learn more details and intricacies of the operations in the district. We discussed the Mattoon closure. Tim shared the district map and explained changes to the attendance boundaries. The most recent changes include having the police and students attend Pleasant View instead of Spring Valley. Furthermore, K-12 passing will not be introduced until the 2017-18 school year. In district transfers, the board discussed student attendance within the district. Cindy Fisher will be contacting parents to work with families needing to change their attending school. Mallier Bus Company will also have bus drivers contact families by August 1st as they work out their bus routes. The approval for the attendance boundaries will be on the agenda for the business meeting. Tim explained the process of moving over the next few weeks. Teachers reassigned from Mattoon are expected to box classroom materials and decide on items they do not want to move. In that case, other district facilities would have the opportunity to use those remaining items. The building itself will sit as it is until the board later determines what to do with the Mattoon building. Tim explained the monthly treasures report. Tim explained to the board the monthly reports that are shared with board during the regular monthly board meeting. He asked if there were any other types of reports that the board would like to see. Patrick asked if the business office could provide more detail to the revenue side of the monthly reports. That's very good, Tim. Tim went over the reports and explained. Safety and security, security cameras. Committee discussed the protocol for releasing records to the police department in the event of an emergency situation. We are in need of developing a policy pertaining to this protocol. It was noted that other districts, not all other districts have one, but we should have one. Leap in the implementation of the ALICE, Jake provided an update to the committee regarding the local groups meeting to form a countywide emergency committee, including police department, school district, and city and county offices. The next meeting will be August 16th at 7:00 PM at the high school. And the meeting was adjourned at 9:00.
Last motion, I motion on boundaries?
I would make a motion to... I move the board approve the elementary school attendance boundaries as revised pursuant to closing of Mattoon School, elementary school, and authorize administration to begin notifying the affected parents as well as making any necessary changes to transportation routes.
Second.
Okay, motion for Mr. Mary, second from Mr. McKenna. Any discussion? Very none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, let's see. Thank you. Summer meeting is planned, Mr. Lighterman. In light of this...
Not a whole lot, but I just wanted to update you on everything that we're doing because there's a lot that's moving right now. Everything is on schedule for the most part. Obviously, any probably plan has its hangups, but nothing major. Spring Valley is going very well. They should have it just about wrapped up by the end of the week here. They're really, we got good weather, which is always fortunate. The remodels are going well. Those are on track, and I'd like to offer that if anybody wants a quick nickel tour after the meeting, I'll go down there with them and show you what's going on. Lisa will be doing a write-up about it in the paper tomorrow. We did a shutdown at the middle school. That the electrical systems in the buildings are at that age where they're due, that they need to be opened up, cleaned out, tested, inspected, make sure they're in good operating conditions, just through the process of normal use. Things do happen that need to be addressed. And we were able to catch one issue that would have cost us roughly 20 grand sold. And that would be on the low side. Had it gone to the worst-case scenario, it would have been much more sold. Very good money spent, in my opinion. It cost the boat a little over $5,000 to have the company come in and do that, which was considerably less than they had afforded a $7,000 price tag, and they reduced the price to, that went quicker and easier than they had imagined. They gave us a write-back, which was good. So, this fall, we just had an issue here on the service last night that took out the main breaker in the switchgear. There's a fault on the trash compactor, and without getting into too many details, there's some settings that have to be inspected, engineered, and adjusted based on just normal use of adding on and technology changing as it goes. The load structure needs to be reassessed. So, that was kind of an eye-opener. I was going to wait till next summer to do that, but I think we are better off to do that this fall, so we don't have any problems this winter.
But that particular circuit was just a little bit...
It's a equation...
More complicated.
Yeah, all the breakers are, they're many settings to them, and they're kind of, if you were to evaluate, or compare it from a regular breaker to this breaker, it'd be like, oh, what phones, the smartphones now? So, they have to be dialed in precisely so that the particular piece of equipment that had the issue would have tripped off the breaker that it was first in line with, since those settings were out of whack, it tricked out the main in that whole switchgear. So, nothing catastrophic, nothing that cost us money, but...
Sounds like you cut your hands around it pretty quick.
Yep. We're on the right track to get it straightened out. That's just, it's common maintenance, so it's nothing alarming, but it's time to have it addressed, so.
Anybody have any questions on that, forget? Good, thank you. We'll go into the board action. First one, amendment to the 2015-2016 budget, Mr. Pronti.
Okay, in your boardback, and I did provide a couple of documents, and tonight I want to focus primarily on the budget publication, June 2016. And I thought I'd focus on that one because that's the one we're going to publish in the paper, and board members may get some questions on it. Probably not. This is routine business, and the state has statutory language on how we present the budget amendment, and we're using the state publication to go ahead and do that. Our auditors routinely like to see that we're amending the budget to reflect closer to actual versus what we did when we first adopted it back in October. So, the first thing I want to emphasize is the budget as presented is balanced. We amended the budget to, it's at $26,809,351. That's up $196,839, and that's a result of unanticipated additional revenues and their corresponding expenses. So, we had additional, what we call a common school fund aid, which is library aid of $29,000. We had increased sage allocation of $52,000, and we had $112,000 in other grants. Chiefly, I'll give you three examples. We had $16,000 additional in educator effectiveness grant. We had $34,000 in foster grandparent grant, and then we had coordinated early intervening services of $42,000. So, that total is why we're amending the budget. What I thought I'd do is go down to each box and then describe what's kind of happening behind it. And the special projects fund is an example. It's two funds combined. It's special ed, which is Fund 27, and it's our donations, which are in Fund 21. And why DPI combines these two for this publication? I don't know. It's confusing, but it is what it is. As amended, the budget is now at $4,777,490, and that's a decrease of $20,557. Within that, Fund 27 is, its revenues and expenses are down $92,387,000, but our donations and the corresponding expenses associated with those donations are up $71,830. So, that one's a little confusing, it's the way DPI does it. The next box down is the capital projects fund, and this reflects the activity of the establishment of the Fund 46 Long-Term Capital Trust. Right now, I'm anticipating that we would be transferring $150,000 into that area. As I mentioned last month, that there's a clock that's ticking. We cannot use any funds put into that trust for the next five years. We have up until July 31st to make the final transfers, so we'll be looking at that later in the next month, but I anticipate it'll be a year, $150,000. That money is designated to go into our investment account with PMA. And it's, PMA is the investment manager, and it's state funds that are used by all K-12 districts for depository. The next box down is food service. Food service is amended at $1,227,315, and that reflects an increase of activity of $21,000 associated with the summer feeding program, which we did not have budgeted prior to this start of the budget. The next box down is community service. That one, as amended, is $557,402, and that reflects an increase of $67,500 worth of additional donations that were not anticipated. We applied for a Remington Foundation grant, and we were awarded almost $61,000 for a painting project at the pool. Those dollars, that project, I believe Jake, is going to be starting on July 5th. Then, the last item there on the next page would be all funds. So, our amended budget then, all totaled, Funds 10 through Fund 80 are at $30,858,544. That reflects a net increase of $318,006. And essentially, what that is, is that's a combination of all the variances, all the increases and decreases across 10 through 80. And it represents, if you look at that inter-fund transfer, that inter-fund transfer is down $61,329,000, and that essentially represents what we're transferring from Fund 10 to Fund 27, and it's down by that amount primarily because special education transportation costs are lower. Questions on the publication? What I'd like you to do now is just switch to the budget adoption, and I just want to highlight, you're going to see the budget adoption, again, is in the DPI format, and essentially, the revenue side of the equation is very, very similar. I want you to pop down to page two. We list our expenditures by function. So, when we talk about function, is what are the dollars spent for? And an area where I want to look at is if we look at the function, $220,000, instructional staff services. And you can see there that we've got over a $200,000 increase in our overall budget in that area. That area includes libraries, and it includes technologies. So, what we did is, earlier in the month, or in the year, I talked to you about our staffing, where we had this, we call it a plug account. That plug account happens to be in the $110,000 area, and it's an area that we use so that as staffing changes, as people switch insurances, as people come and go, we have an area that we can draw from. So, that would be an example of how we had capital projects in the $110,000 area, and that included things like computers and desks, textbooks, those kinds of things. And we made some of those transfers into this area, where we transferred additional dollars for laptops, iPads, the phone system. So, we made a minimal $100,000 transfer into this area for the phone system, as well as the laptops that I talked about. And the $100,000 came from our transportation. All along, I've been saying that we haven't met our gas escalator. The transportation comes out of the $250,000 area. So, we transferred funds from the $250,000 into the $220,000 area. Likewise, for Jake's budget, we transferred $106,000, and again, it was from transportation. So, we had between special education and the general education, almost $206,000 that we transferred, and we used 106 of it for remodeling. And since that's part of that $250,000 area, it's kind of like a transfer within the fund, but I just thought I'd point that out. And then lastly, if we go down, and we can page down, I think it's going to be page three, we're looking at... You can see the $150,000 there in the capital projects fund. That transfer was made up of multiple transfers that we made from different areas, but the biggest one was I overestimated our expenses with open enrollment out. And so, we had, as we had talked about earlier in the year, we had fewer open enrollees going out of the district than what I had budgeted for. So, we transferred $120,000 from open enrollment out. We had a rebate on property insurance and workers' comp insurance, and we also had lower interest costs on our short-term borrowing, and all those transfers made up $150,000. So, there's an awful lot going on between these three or four pages, but the last report, you don't certainly have to look at it now. The fourth document that I have in the bundle is the budget summary detail, and if you look at that, that's going to give you the breakdown of where our revenues are coming from, where our donations are coming from. And we use that document to kind of track these budget changes. And then also, because they're donations for a specific purpose, or they're a grant for a specific purpose, at the end of the year, some of those unexpended funds that will be used as assigned to the fund balance. So, you'll see that number in the budget book, and that's where that'll come from, the budget summary. So, that concludes my report. Any questions?
Anybody? Thank you, Tina. We'd be looking for a motion then, please.
I move the board approve and adopt the amended fiscal year 2016 budget as presented.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Mary, second from Ms. Gialzo. Any discussion? Bobby, roll call, please.
Scott Jensenma?
Yes.
Jeanne Long? Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Danielle Yuska?
Yes.
Tim Fuller?
Yes.
Tara Gisso?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
And Mike Boldy?
Yes.
Everybody? The boss stories for school district funds.
I move the board approve the following financial institutions as official depositaries of this fund. Banner Banks, BMO Harris Bank, Co-Managed Credit Union, First Merritt Bank, JP Morgan Chase Bank, Global Government Investment Pool, Mid-America Administrative and Retirement Solutions Incorporated, PMA Financial Network Incorporated/Wisconsin Investment Series Cooperative.
Second.
Motion for Ms. Gialzo, second from Mr. Mary. Any discussion on this? Tim?
Tim?
Yes.
These are firms that we're doing business with, and this is just a requirement that we have to do annually to give notice and authorize us to make these as depositors so we can bank with them. And these all need to be approved to be made. Any questions on depositors? Hearing on Bobby, roll call both, please.
Jeanne Long?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Danielle Yushka?
Yes.
Tim Fuller?
Yes.
Terrick Essel?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Scott Jensenma?
Yes.
And Mike Boldy?
Onto item C. Why did they co-operate with your softball, so at this point you'd be the confirmed motion, please?
I move the board approve cooperative athletic agreement with White Lake School District for softball.
Motion for Mr. Mary, second for Mr. McKenna. Yeah, enlighten us a little bit on this one.
Sure. Basically, at the end of White Lake's season, off the middle of May, they found out that they were probably roughly going to only have five or six girls for next year. They asked Elko if they could cooperate with them, but Elko basically has a full varsity team, and in that conference, you're basically only getting varsity games. So they would cooperate with them. Now there's some Elko kids and White Lake kids not getting that opportunity to play. And Anago, we have, now for two and a half teams, we've done it for the last two years, basically playing like a JV, JV2, and using some of the same players. So bringing in another five girls to six girls actually helps us and allows us to have three teams. And now it gives our other five players that maybe they're shifting back and forth, stabilizes three teams. So it's a two-year contract. But again, it'll give us roughly about 30, 35 girls, which will allow us to have three competitive teams at each level. The expenses will be split up just like we do for boys hockey. We have a White Lake student that travels to Anago. Everything will come to Anago, it'll still be Anago. So it's not your traditional split in half co-op. They're all coming here, our coaches are still our coaches, everything is provided underneath this establishment in this school district. And then we'll take the total number of participants, divide that by the number of girls White Lake has coming here to us, and we'll bill them at the end of the year for those expenses. But it just gives those girls from White Lake an opportunity to play. Otherwise, they'd be sitting in the woods.
Any other questions, discussion? Hearing on, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Yeah, I assume you're going to let White Lake go?
Yep, without problems.
Okay, the next one. Academic monitoring reports scheduled for 2016, 2017. Motion, please, for this idea.
I move the board approve the schedule of academic monitoring reports as presented for 2016, '17.
Motion by Mr. Mary, second by Mrs. Law. Phil, bring it.
Thank you. As Jeanne mentioned in reviewing the committee on instruction minutes, we discussed the monitoring reports at the committee on instruction meeting. At a previous board meeting, someone had brought up the possibility of reducing from four monitoring reports to three, which, because of where we're at right now, and implementing some of our assessments and developing our guarantee curriculum makes sense, because for the most part, we're basing our monitoring reports on our benchmark assessments, which occur three times a year. Once in September through October to get a baseline, once in late January, early February to find out how students are doing, and then again in May to find out how they ended the year, or at least see the role throughout the year. In a perfect world, we have some formative assessments in place aligned with our curriculum, so we could be, we do assess more often, so we have valid standards-based assessment more often. We're in the process of working on that, that's part of our professional development plan for the next few years. So I propose to the instruction committee that we reduce to three times a year. There were discussions, and the members of the instruction committee really felt that it may even make sense to reduce to two times a year. Once in our first, we were first presented in December, and we give you information on how the first benchmark assessment went. And then we come back in June and tell you how we ended the year. There would be a middle presentation where Cindy and I would have the principals come to us and present to us at one of our management team meetings. So I guess what we're proposing at this time, based on our discussion at the committee on instruction meeting, is that we adjust our schedule to presenting to the board twice a year with a third presentation in the middle of the year, a product sponsor presentation at our administrative meeting.
Sounds good.
So what you'll get from us is the beginning data and the end data for 16, '17, or we'll reevaluate next year.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor? Next up. The CUSAB resolution, so we will be looking for a motion, please. I feel like it's a stretch for us. This is going to be long, so hold on a minute.
I'm sorry, so bear with me. I move the board adopt the following resolution, be resolved by the school board of the district, that in Section 1, authorization of the notes for the purposes of paying the cost of the project there shall be borrowed pursuant to Section 67.12, Section 12 Wisconsin statutes, the principal sum of not to exceed $2,500,000 from the purchaser to be determined by a subsequent resolution of the school board, will hereby be called the purchaser. Section 2, sales of the notes. To evidence such indebtedness, the district president and district clerk are hereby authorized, empowered, and directed to make, execute, issue, and sell to the purchaser for, on behalf of and in the name of the district, general obligation per missionary notes aggregating the principal amount not to exceed $2,500,000. Sorry. Section 3, the notice to the electors pursuant to Section 67.12, Section 12, subsection E to Wisconsin statutes, the district clerk, within 10 days of adoption of this resolution, cause public notice of such adoption to be given to the electors by the district by publishing a notice in the Anago Daily Journal, the official newspaper of the district. The notice to the electors shall be in subsequently the form attached here as to Exhibit A and incorporated herein within by this reference, and therefore hereon out be called the notes. Section 4, award of the notes. Following the receipt of the purchase proposal from the purchasers specifying the terms and interest rates of the notes, the school board shall consider taking further action to provide the details of the notes and to levy a direct annual deductible tax to pay the principal of any interest on the notes as required by law. Any such further action shall be subject to the condition that no petition or referendum on the question of the insurance of the note has been filed within 30 days of the publication of the notice. Section 5, declaration of official intent. The district hereby officially declares its intent pursuant to Section 54A, subsection D, subsection 2, subsection D of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986, as amended and described under Treasury Regulation Section 1.150-2, to reimburse qualifying expenditures for the project which proceeds in qualifying tax credit bonds consisting of a qualified zone academic funds, the principal amount which is not to exceed $2,500,000. Subsection 6, conflicting resolutions, severity, ability, effective date. All prior resolutions, rules, or other actions of the school board or any parts thereof in conflict with the provisions hereof shall be and the same are hereby rescinded insofar as the same may sole conflict. In the event that any one or more provisions hereof shall for any reasons be held to be illegal or invalid, or such illegitability or validity shall not affect any other provisions hereof. The foregoing shall take effect immediately upon adoption and approval in the manner provided by law. This entire resolution shall be attached to the official minutes of this meeting. Thank you.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, someone take the easy one.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Jensenma, and second from Mrs. Lee regarding the CUSAB
Is there, are there any strings attached with this money? I guess I'm curious, have we as a district ever done CUSAB before?
You did it once before and returned the money to the Department of Public Instruction unexpended.
How was that?
When was it?
No, why?
I have no idea why. Tim, do you know why?
What I recall, Don, is we had a, we ran an operating question, and the operating, we had applied for the CUSAB, and the operating question failed. And the board and the administration thought the orders had spoken and we shouldn't use
Are there any strings attached with this money? We can just spend it to do whatever remodeling?
Could have to do it on those, I mean, we had to submit a plan with the application, but it was all the elementary schools. And the original request included electrical work at the middle school, but the amount of money was reduced. But each of those schools which qualify as a qualified zone academy, which means they're a school that has a free and reduced lunch rate of at least 35%, which happens to be all of our schools, is eligible. And the purpose of the funds, really, you need to follow the plan, but you can revise the plan. Currently, the plan calls for addressing the HVAC issues in the elementary schools, to the degree possible, the handicap accessibility in the elementary schools, and potentially, if the funds stretch far enough, some electrical and other energy savings projects.
And if I'm correct, we cannot use these monies for any new type of construction? It's all basically got to be remodeling and upgrading?
Yes. Funds also are available for purchasing of equipment within a qualified academy and materials. So you can also use it for that, acquisition of library materials, for instance, new desks, whatever you feel is necessary. We put into the plan those things that were highlighted as high priority in the CESE and TEN report in 2014.
Administratively, is the whole, is everyone on board with this? Is this like, does everyone agree that this is something we should move forward with?
There are some concerns and questions about the membership in the academy that attaches to this in terms of access to professional development. And a very legitimate concern that the presence of the academy not necessarily interfere with the professional development plan of the district. It doesn't need to, because the academy is highly flexible in terms of what it looks like in any given school. Brian and I had a conversation with the executive vice president of the National Education Foundation, which does the match funding and runs the academy. And his description was, there are districts that use it for after-school programs, there are districts that use it for club activities, a wide variety of things. We have had a staff development plan that has been two-tiered, one required all staff members and one elective, and the academies would fit into the tier-two elective staff development. There's a cost to it, so, but that cost can be paid out of the CUSAB revenues, once the money's expensed.
What does that mean?
That cost can be paid out of the taxes we raise from CUSAB.
Could be paid out of the CUSAB.
Out of bonds.
What would that cost look like?
It looks like $625,000.
Okay.
One time.
One time, yep. And it's good for five years of service. And includes taking people who are under the professional development plan with the program, literally bringing them out of state to wherever they're running their programs and doing professional development there, and involves their people coming here to work with our people. I view it as something that should be voluntary on the part of staff members, but I think it's important to attach to the technology initiatives of the district. I still have a little concern about expending taxpayer dollars on smart boards, for instance, that are being used as nothing more than overpriced fancy overhead projectors. And I think we need to do a little more technology training with our staff. They do have courses. They have English, language arts, and math at the elementary level. I thought they had some STEM activities at the elementary level, but in looking it over, Cindy assured me they don't, that they don't. But they do have STEM activities for the high school level, so.
So this would be, the academy would be helping our teachers to teach more, or would it be directly teaching the kids?
No, the academy would be professional development for our teachers.
Professional development, okay.
Yeah, yeah. And I think the concern that it not interfered with the initiatives that have already been undertaken in professional development is a genuine concern. I think it's got to be organized and conducted in a manner that makes sure that it's an elective thing for staff members. We may want to encourage certain people to do it, but we don't want to make it something everybody has to do, because it will usurp the other initiatives that may have gone to do that.
So I guess, Cindy, what do you, I mean, you know, from a curriculum standpoint and from, or in everyone, like, CUSAB, does it fit in with things well, or does it not fit in with things well?
I think we need to see the list of courses that is more detailed than what we can gain access to with the online thing. Perhaps Brian can get a more comprehensive list from Arts Stellar. Until we see that list of classes, I don't really know. You know, if we're teaching a certain way with, like, for example, CPM math, and then you try to use some other type of software program to support misunderstandings or to reteach or something, there could be a conflict there. So I think only a more comprehensive list of the 3,000-plus courses that are being advertised, that's how we can determine whether that alignment will be there or not.
If we vote for this now, we go out to issue the bond formally, is that right? But then we don't, what does, it's a long resolution, I guess I'd like clarity about what exactly we are, and we're requesting a bond?
Well, the resolution is simply notifying the public that you intend to borrow $2,500, $2,500,000, excuse me, and that you intend to repay it out of existing revenues, absent a petition appropriately signed and submitted that would force you to refer. And that authorizes the borrowing, it meets the state requirement for how that kind of borrowing has to be moved over. It's put in the newspaper probably tomorrow, and then there's a 30-day waiting period to see if such a petition is forthcoming. to see if such a petition is forthcoming. At that point, you have choices to make. You can either find a financial institution that is interested in the tax breaks that will allow them to lend us the $2,500,000 interest-free, or you can decide to return the money to the DPI and not take advantage of it. You could, I suppose, I don't think it would be ethical to do it, I would not recommend it, but you could breach the agreement with the academy and have to pay a penalty. So those are really your choices.
So we could adopt the resolution today, but then we wouldn't be bound to do, to actually take the money, because I guess my concern would be, I get that it's, it's interest-free borrowing, but the fact that, you know, if these classes are not beneficial to the staff, then it really isn't interest-free. I mean, it's almost like you're paying money to get money.
Well.
In a way. I mean, I'm hoping that they would, but I mean, we would have time, I guess, before we actually said, okay.
Yeah.
It would still come to a vote before that, that borrowing would actually take place.
The flip side is this, as part of that agreement, we're getting a million dollars worth of access to software, free. That's the 10% in-kind. It only has to be $250,000, but they're giving us the totality of what they have accessible. It's way beyond, I think, for a district our size, beyond our capacity to take advantage of all of it, but we can certainly take advantage of the 10% of all of it by licensing that to individual students and teachers so that they can use it in whatever ways are appropriate and, and meet the needs. Needs to be emphasized that, you know, this, the instructional parts of the academy, the programs and so forth that they offer are all research-based, they're all in place in various parts of the country, they're all highly successful, they guarantee that students will make one year's progress in one academic year. And so it isn't like this has come kind of fly-by-night operation. It's coming out of the State University of New York and the National Education Foundation. And they're highly reputable, and in fact, the QZAB program was in trouble a few years ago because they couldn't get school districts to take the money. And the reason they couldn't is because they couldn't find people who were willing to put up the in-kind contribution. I mean, if you want to go out and apply, as some people have done in the past, for $25, $26 million of QZAB money, that means you got to find somebody who's going to come up with $2.5 million in in-kind contributions, and most businesses, frankly, are a little reluctant to do that. So the federal government contacted the State University of New York and the National Education Foundation and asked them if they would take this bond and use their resources to be able to provide the 10% in-kind match. And that's what all of that is about. They contracted with the government to do this, and they've been doing it now for, eh, at least five years, and then all, maybe a couple more. So it's a pretty well-established program.
The other part, the building component part, were there any concerns about how that has to be done? I mean, can we just hire whoever we want to build or do the HVAC stuff, or are there strings attached?
Well, I think that there is due diligence that the board would need to do in terms of RFPs and selections going to bid and selection of contractors to do the work. I don't think you can just flat-out say, I'm going to expend this money and give it to so-and-so. So you'd go through a process similar to what Jake has gone through on several of the projects that he's brought before the board, getting people to bid on them. Now, you do have an option for one more layer on this thing, and that is to dovetail the work with the Act 32 Energy Conservation Law that allows districts to expand funds and, and encourage that to take on energy-related projects, as all of our HVAC and probably our electrical and lighting projects would be. That would allow you to levy for a certain party or repay them, because that law allows for, and I think Tim explained this to the board when we discussed this last time and you adopted the motion for Department of Public Construction, that, that allows for that portion of the cost that is not part of your savings to be levied. So if you combine the two of them, I think you can substantially give yourself a lift. And the work needs to be done on our elementary schools. There's just no question about it, they're in dismal condition, and they need upgrades. To not do so, quite frankly, in my view, and you may discount it entirely, but to not do so, in my view, would be to violate your own vision and goals because it would be dis-serving the generation of students that are presently in our elementary schools. And I think our kids are entitled to be in the schools that are at least competitive with, if not the equivalent of, schools that other kids in their age groups are, are attending. And we're behind the curve a little bit, and I think you all know it, in the sense that most school districts around the state have already upgraded their 50s and 60s vintage elementary schools by virtue of replacement of the schools. So this is an intermediate step, I think, is responsible to take, and I frankly encourage you to do it, but it's your decision. And if you decide between now and the end of August, you want to bail on it, you can do that. There is a period of time in which you have to expend the funds. That's one of the conditions. And I think, I don't know if there's three years or five years or something.
But we could use this money on one or two schools or all seven, since.
Because they're all eligible.
Right.
And the middle school, so that's actually.
Yeah, you could do it on the middle school if you had the money and the ownership or wanted to allocate that.
So what would the yearly payment be on these bonds? Assuming that we don't get the Act 32, we don't do the Act 30.
Sure. Your repayment on $2,500,000 on a 10-year promissory note, which is as far out as you can take a promissory note, would be $250,000 a year.
$250,000 a year.
Yeah, for 10 years. Now, there is an option. It would probably cost you about 2% of the total amount of money to do it, but you could convert the promissory note, if you find a financial institution willing to do it, into bonds. And once it's a bond, you could go out up to 20 years, which would further reduce your annual payment interest rate, so.
Yeah, my thought is that to take $250,000 out of our general fund, essentially, you know, we, we struggle every year to balance a budget anyhow. This is just another $250,000.
It is.
And I guess my simple thought is, well, why don't we just take $250,000 out of fund balance every year, or why don't we just go ahead and take the whole $2 million right now? And I don't know, what we pay, when we take money out of fund balance, what are we paying for interest?
You're getting state aids over.
Won't we get state aids on this bond money? When we're paying, paying for the bond, won't we get state aids on that?
If it exceeds, if you're outside the revenue limit, would you, it's an expenditure, so it's an eating expenditure.
But it wouldn't be outside the revenue limit, it would be inside the revenue limit.
Then we would be...
Or would it be outside because you're taking it out of fund balance?
To do it outside, you'd have to be Act 32, but, talks about the fullness contracting.
Right.
Inside the revenue limit, we have a limited amount by the, we're limited by the revenue limit on what we can spend. By spending fund balance, we're exceeding what we can spend, and that additional expenditure is equitable.
Might be equitable, yeah. But if we just took money out of fund balance and spent it, that's equitable too.
Correct.
And my other concern about this is that, you know, we kind of have a history in Yanico of people thinking we're sneaking around to, of things, you know. I don't know, Brian, I just want to know what you think about this whole thing.
I think, and first of all, I apologize, I probably haven't done as much homework up to this point as I should have. But I think I definitely do more homework on the academy side of things. We did have a conversation with Art Stellar. I've got a few more questions I want to answer, just in terms of, I understand what we pay and what we're getting in return, I really want to know what the accountability piece on that is for us. We are expected to set up these academies if we're spending the money, or this academy, what that all entails and what essentially the IRS is going to be looking for when they're, when they're checking in that we've done that. So I think, you know, I shared with the administrative a little bit today, I'm still a little uneasy about it, unsure about it. I need to do my homework and catch up on it, which early July we spent doing. And anytime you have a four-paragraph motion, you've got some homework to do, probably. So, so again, I apologize, I haven't spent as much time on it as I probably should have up till this point. I'll be jumping into it a little more and really taking it and see, but, you know, the way Don put it today, I guess, is a good way to look at it. We need to decide, we need to decide if we want essentially $1.9 million to upgrade our elementaries, because that's really what we'll be left with after we paid $625,000 to, sorry, we're learning academy or not. One doesn't really come without the other, so. I think between Tim, Cindy, and I, we've got a little research to do still, and as Cindy mentioned, we've seen some of the course proposals. What I've seen so far, I'm not sure how beneficial that would be to us, so I want to get a full list on that. I want to find out what kind of professional development we're going to get for our teachers, what the academy really entails. As Don mentioned, there's a lot of different ways to set up these academies, and there may be ways for us to set one up within what we're doing, but one of the commitments I've made to staff as I've gone around the buildings is that, you know, we're really going to develop some consistency, long-term consistency in what we're doing, and yes, as Don mentioned, I want to make sure that this doesn't throw a wrench in those plans because I think it'd be a way to really upset our staff. Have another thing to throw at them, so it definitely has to be elective and definitely has to fit into what we're already doing.
Can you just do that number for me again? We're taking essentially a quarter, a quarter of the money and using it for the bond, for the academy.
Correct.
Five years.
I guess the thing, the thing I like about it is that it kind of forces us to spend money on improving the buildings. I feel like every year, you know, we try to do it, and there's only so much we can do, and then you get a new board, you get new members, and then things might change, and this kind of forces our hand. You got that money, you got to spend it on this. I mean, I, I like that, but yeah, I mean, I, I see the concern about, you, I get the fact that it's interest-free borrowing, but again, you're kind of paying to get it, so it's not without interest. But, yeah, I mean, if, if that money isn't going to, if the money we're going to spend on the educational aspect isn't going to be spent on things that will be helpful, is there a point of basically that throwing that money away to get the $1.9 million dollars?
Well, that presumes that the academy is throwing money away.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it sounds like people don't know.
You know, stop and think, this board and precedent boards, prior boards, have spent, how much money do you suppose on technology in this district and on software? And in any five-year period, what have you expended? You really think that for five years, $625,000 is exhausted? Because it isn't, and it comes with guaranteed results, which none of what we have in place right now gives us. And we have ample proof of that in terms of the widely varying degrees of uses of the technology among our staff. While we've made systematic attempts to resolve that by having tech coaches in the buildings and having a tech committee, we're just not making the progress that can be made, and we're getting the very best there is to provide training to those people who want to do things in the building with technology that it is capable of doing. And it allows the opportunity down the road to build a trainer of trainers model so that those people later on can be more effective at working with other staff members who didn't volunteer to get involved in it. And, you know, quite frankly, I think that there might be those people who would look at the expenditures that have already been made in technology in the district as a huge waste of money because it's not producing results. This has guaranteed results.
What are the guaranteed results? I'm sorry.
You will make one year's academic, for every student who's using coursework, you will make one year's academic progress in one academic year.
Say that again?
One year's progress for one year's work.
It's essentially saying kids won't fall behind, right? That they will stay at the pace you want them.
They aren't promising that a kid that is minimal in reading is going to be proficient inside of a year, or even two.
And they're not even promising that a third grader that reads at a second-grade level or performs at a secondary level is going to be at a fourth grade level the next year, I think.
That's correct. They'll make one year's progress.
They're going to be at a third grade level next year.
But if you look at the kids that we are monitoring under RTI, many of them, though they are making progress, are not making a year's progress in what they're doing.
If, if they don't make that progress, then why don't we get our money?
What happens?
If they don't make the progress, yeah, I think we could argue with them about it, quite frankly. I've thought that part through, but I think, yes, if it's being done properly and the staff was properly trained, and we expended the funds on staff training the way we should for those people who are interested, and I keep wanting to put that out there, I'm not looking at this as being something that should have to involve the entire staff. Concern has been raised, and it's a legitimate concern, about not disrupting the current flow of professional development in the district as designed on a multi-year basis. That's sad to say. But we do have those things transpiring outside of that plan where staff is involved in all kinds of professional development activities. Some of them are taking academic coursework to get another degree. We have a group of people we're working with who are taking academic coursework, certified as reading teachers. We've done staff development with people who are interested in co-teaching and multi-age grouping. None of those things interfere with the essential plan for professional development, and this doesn't do too, either.
So I'd really like to have this look at what's available for special ed, because if we look at our performance of special ed students over time, I know, maybe it's improved in the last year or two, but compared to the state, we are pretty downshift.
Well, it's down a little bit, but when I came here three years ago, your rate of students in special education was double the state average.
Yeah, but even, even performance of those special ed students is laying well below the state average.
It is below the state average, that's absolutely right.
And so if I'm understanding this right, this is going to focus in how these students advance and, yeah, because currently they're not catching up as...
Well, it's only going to help them if those instructors are part of this program.
Exactly.
If they're not part of the program.
And frankly, while I'd encourage them, I don't think I'd require them, because I think that would begin to erode the status quo the plan is currently in place.
Well, I, you know, I guess I could see approving this tonight, but before I approve this in August, which is the final time they have to approve it, right?
Well, by August is when you have to decide whether you're going to accept the money or not.
Yeah, essentially, I guess.
And if you accept it, then you have a certain timeline by which you have to start spending and finish spending, so.
This is really just making sure that we announce it to the public?
Yeah, but I mean, by that time, I would like to see, have some idea of whether or not... not our staff is going to accept this, or some department in our staff is going to use it or not.
One of the things that we would break the bars, first of all, how it fits with what we're doing, I think, again, I'd look into what our commitment is with the Cyber Learning Academy and what the accountability pieces are for us, and probably the next week, hopefully possibly review some of those commitments, just to make sure we're not beating it over, I haven't done anything, but I think it's certainly fair to come back to you with an idea of how we're going to use this academy, because as Don mentioned again, it looks different in a lot of different districts. In some districts, they use the software from the academy and those sorts of things as their curriculum.
That's right.
I don't see us using it that way. We could possibly use it, you know, again, to train teachers, to possibly use it as an intervention for some students, maybe some extension activity for some students, possibly in our after-school program. Those are all things, you know, Don has mentioned possibly some of the software with, in the fab lab we have. Those are all things we need to look at.
But I guess I would like to know if, you know, say you're going to use it in the after-school program, if all of those students do not make one year's academic progress, will we get our money back? Is that the guarantee?
I think, I think that's a legitimate question. I think the caveat around that is, well, you know, on what basis are they using the software and taking the instruction?
Exactly.
If they use it every other day, or once a month, or something like that, I doubt you can hold the NEF's feet to the fire in terms of not having gotten the results.
That would be my guess, too, and so I just want to know at what level we have to be doing this.
Well, I think it's a legitimate question, I think it could be, I think it could be answered. I would tell you, quite frankly, the easiest thing for you to do would just simply do what you suggested, Andy, which is to simply say, forget it, we aren't going to do any of it, tell DPI to return the money, we're going to spend that money, and we're going to do it out of fund balance, and we're going to do these projects. That's the bottom line. Doing the things that have to be done in these elementary schools and put jacket around the thing and playing games with it, and every year we're going to do it, and every year we don't, and meanwhile, they're deteriorating faster and faster. And I understand there is an interest in consolidating the district and building a single new elementary school, but the fact is that as long as there are more rural voters in this community than our city voters, it ain't going to happen. And I can go over the floor pretty well, says everything that needs to be said about that. That means for the foreseeable future and the students who are here now, like it or not, we are stuck with the schools we have, let's make them at least habitable for the kids that are in them.
That's a good answer. Can we call, is that a question?
Yes.
All right. We have a discussion on this, and we will go to roll call vote, Bobby.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Danielle Yushka?
Yes.
Tim Fuller?
Yes.
Tara Gisso?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Scott Johnson?
Yes.
Janie Long?
Yes.
And Mike Oldy?
Yes.
A good note, the discussion around the issue was actually longer than the reading of the resolution.
This is true.
Okay, let's go on to, resignations, motion please.
I move the board approve the resignations of Rebecca Moll, Melanie Luck, Matt Weberpaul, and Bonnie Estall.
Motion from Ms. Mead, second, from Mr. Mary to approve resignations of the four individuals who all had information on board docs that indicated their reasoning, so any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. New hires, be looking for a motion.
I move the board approve the hiring of the following individuals for positions as listed, Trevor Baseman, Amy Owen, Lisa Zieg, David Owen, Dan Chandler, and Lindsay Stratt.
Motion from Ms. Gilzow, second, from Ms. Law. Any discussion on these?
I would just like to say you're getting a really good guy in the council here, and Mike's sister-in-law is upset.
Which one is that?
Lindsay Stratt.
My sister-in-law is upset?
Yeah, she's a white light guy.
Oh, okay. My sister-in-law is principal women's, for those of you who don't know.
So she's actually very, very committed to the kids.
Are the Owens, by chance? Just a question. Any, any more discussion on new hires? Hearing none, Bobby, roll call vote, please.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Danielle Yushka?
Yes.
Tim Fuller?
Yes.
Tara Gisso?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Scott Johnson?
Yes.
Janie Long?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
And Mike Oldy?
Yes.
Next item up will be donations. And as you can see by the rather lengthy list, we have received $17,194.66 in donations, many of them regarding the Carnegie Hall Coral Trip. And I see, one that I found kind of interesting was the Shawano County Sheriff's Office. What was that one all about?
They had a, maybe drop off a check for $500, $500, I'm not sure where the money was raised from, essentially said they wanted to do something nice for our kids, and asked Tom and Anita to use it for the students.
That's all very kind of them.
So I believe they're planning on doing kind of a welcome back to school event early next year.
Nice.
Would this be sort of in the wake of the...
Correct, yep.
The other one I'd like to play out there is one from Church Mutual.
Yes.
The employees raised almost $1,700 for improvements to the security system. I mean, the Church Mutual Foundation wanted to also match those funds. Oh, and that's the other one down below? Correct. And they both are to be used for upgrades of building security here in high school. Very thoughtful, well appreciated. I don't think we need a roll here to accept them, do we? No.
You mean a roll call? You've always had a, I don't know why there's one here.
I'll make a motion to accept the donations from the month of June and send out a sincere thank you to all the donors.
Second. Motion from Mr. Johnson, second, from Mr. McKenna. Any discussion?
I guess the only thing is, is the one, the one to date was from February of '03, and four are more from...
Oh, I just saw June, I had already quit on that.
I'm just saying on top, I just mentioned if that makes any difference.
Thanks. No, that's one we're, Tim, we're trying to correct that situation where donations go to the high school, and we, somehow that one slipped through the cracks and it got deposited in the activity account, but we never acknowledged and thanked the group for their donation.
We will, and we will.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, and we accept all the donations with much gratitude. I'll make a motion, you have a close session. Okay. A motion from Ms. Johnson, second, from Ms. Law, to go into close session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85 per AMC for consideration compensation adjustment for administration, and 19.85 per AMG concerning legal counsel concerning litigation in which the board's involved. Bobby, roll call vote, please.
Danielle Yushka?
Yes.
Tim Fuller?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Scott Johnson?
Yes.
Janie Long?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.